...session on Thursday, August fifteenth at seven PM. Brown, Brown, and Torres, one, five, nine. Brown will be here for dental purposes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Here.
Mr. Bayne?
There.
Mr. Bashir?
Here.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Here.
Okay. Mr. Delrose?
Here.
Mr. Dorsey?
Here.
Mr. Gammon?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
And Mrs. Karavecchia?
Here.
Get the stamping plate, please. I'm glad to be here.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, superintendent remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recently met with Mr. Jim Bittner of Fay County Emergency Management Unit. We are updating and going to be reviewing our emergency plans for the district. We had an initial discussion this summer, and from that point, Mr. Bittner has suggested that each school review their plan and develop a team within the school. And then review, analyze, and develop a new plan based on a new format from PDE and PIMA. As he reviewed our current plan, he felt that most of the information is there, but needs to be redirected into the new format. From each school, as each school has then developed or has developed their own emergency plan, it will come together as a district-wide plan in a book form. At that point, there will be a district-wide meeting to finalize some of the things that do occur in some type of emergency. Also, there's a scheduled open house for all parents on Wednesday, August 28th, six PM, in the high school auditorium by Morris Morrison. Morris Morrison came here this past year to talk to the kids about education, self-esteem. This is a follow-up, talking to the parents about supporting the students in terms of self-esteem and improving their grades, being active in the school and in the community.
Okay. Item three, public remarks on agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and nature of business. Seeing no one. Item four. Item four, adoption of agenda and related materials for cooperation in the minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Director Gammon, second by Director Karavecchia. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It was Mr. Dorsey.
Consider a motion to approve June 20th, 2013, June 27th, 2013, and July 30th, 2013, board minutes. Motion by Director Karavecchia, second by Director Bayne. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item six, Director Bayne, board member.
First thing that I want to address is, everybody in the audience can hear, I got my phone, people in the audience, there are a couple of them ringing us. I don't know if the sound system went down or what, I mean, up here would sound like it works fine for us. Fair enough. That's a good newspaper here today. Before we can go into the track reports, I have some really serious questions I have to ask my business manager. This board has voted me to be the tracker to look over things that are going on in the track report, and I found a lot of things in this one that are very disturbing. I know that in the past, there's things happening in this district, and that puts us back on our arms, but when I see flags come up, I'm really disturbed. Mr. Kriegliotti, the first question I'm going to ask is, did you bring the bills that we asked you to bring tonight?
I brought a handful of bills. I'm sure they're the ones you questioned the other day on the advertising and the food costs in the cafeteria.
Okay.
Roof scrubbers, roof repairs, cleaning supplies, advertising.
That was about to say anything?
Yeah. The food costs for the cafeteria, the general fund, were not just student month. Majority of those costs, I have the invoice here now, were PSSA testing, snacks for the kids. The March, April, May student month breakfast cost a total of $65.50. The rest of the costs were PSSA testing. There was another $55 in costs for the middle school home economics class. I forget what they called it, they have a program now. But the rest of it was the PSSA treats. We don't have a lot of room to write the descriptions on there. If you pick the last one up instead of all the ones I'm really worried about are PSSA. There were some other costs for refreshments, middle school honor society refreshments, and more PSSA testing. The court for the floor scrubber was a 250-foot roll board, so they can get the machine everywhere. And it is a 6'3" cord specific for that machine, because you gotta remember that machine actually sits on water, so it's gotta be the right board to not have to worry about going any electricity through it. So it is an expensive machine. Now, the roof repairs were for Central, $1,200.
I got a question for the year.
I had a question about the roof repairs. We haven't identified a bill from them, what they repaired.
On this one, we do.
And also cost on a, on Friday?
Yeah, we haven't received those yet. We haven't received those yet.
What were they fixing previously?
Yeah, these invoices from June, there was a leak in the front restroom on the Riverside front entrance, and they made repairs to skylights in the restroom and the expansion joint at the front entrance, $535. And then the other one was a leak over the principal's desk in the main entrance canopy, more repairs to a different skylight.
Hold on a second.
The principal's office.
Can I?
And the canopy.
And the walkway.
Yeah, they did some main entrance canopy.
The main entrance canopy leak is still there?
It might be a different leak, but they addressed one leak on June 17th. They made repairs to a skylight angle over the principal's desk and made repairs to a metal wedge at the front entrance canopy. They're stating there may be more in-depth problems on this canopy, so.
Yeah.
Now, they were out yesterday. We had another leak at the rear hallway entrance of Central, and they repaired that. They did come out and they canvassed and surveyed both the roof at Cox and Central. And he's preparing a report that I will get to the board once I get in. So I'll refer to the board for everything. So he looked at all the roof, all the skylights, and the canopies. We also had our maintenance people in Cox for two days, cleaning the gutters, restructuring the gutters, addressing the soft fascia issues. We found at Cox, I'm waiting for the report on Central, is that you have the fascia ports, they're pulling away at the bottom from the bricks, and what we suspect is happening is the rubber membrane is shrinking. As it shrinks, it will pull it up and cause the fascia to pull away from the board.
Or water's got behind it in this process.
Yeah, and if the roof is leaking, you'll get behind it. The only way you can get underneath is if it's blowing up and under the roof right now, you know, to get under soft fascia. But that's an issue that, you know, you're gonna deal probably with a whole roof if you're gonna wanna address that problem. It's gonna be the whole roof, because everything going around the building is pulling in. I've actually been in one district where there was a, the roof went up, I think on this building, there's a sole wall, and it actually, when the rubber starts shrinking, it cracked bricks. It cracked mortar along the joints and started pulling at the wall again. So if you let roofs get too old, that will happen, rubber shrinking.
It's not the age, it's making its upkeep on this roof.
Well, that's age.
I've been on the central.
Yeah, that's age. That's age.
Or you were talking about.
Yeah. He's giving us a complete report as soon as I get it, because he said a lot of the problems we're having were with the skylights.
Mrs. Krieg, were those leaks fixed that they said they did the other day?
They were there on Friday, and then again, it did leak in the canopy at the entrance to the garden. They did repair that. Again, we have not had any range to kind of measure if there are.
All right, this previous month, they fixed a skylight above your desk or your office, was that?
Yes.
Did that ever happen?
It has not leaked since then.
Okay. Because the amount of money we're paying on constant repairs on these roofs, and there was leaks everywhere.
Well, yeah. And like I said, he's preparing a report for the board, you know, and I will make it available to you once I receive it, on the condition that, you know, you'll probably have a cost associated with it.
I just wanna make sure that if they're charging us for repairs for certain areas, that they aren't leaking, or we call them back to cover that area.
Or that we perform the proper repairs. Because you fix a repair and then the water just sinks, it's next, nobody finds the next place to leak.
If you go up there, you would fix all the repairs in one time. You got this one, you got that one, and you still see this over there, because I know I was in the board, that they were fixing this over here, and some rocks were moved off the skylight, and there was great big holes in the skylight. So when you put them up there, why don't you just tell them to fix all the leaks one time?
Well, they were not instructed to do what I just instructed them to do, from what I understand. So I told them to give me a complete lowdown on roofs, and that's what they're gonna provide us, and then we'll go forward from there.
Not if anything else, maybe you can get other companies there, work out.
Well, the point that's gonna happen is when they come back with the repairs, I'm sure that we're gonna have to operate to get them repaired. They're gonna be over the threshold, so. But you normally start somewhere, this company that they've been using traditionally here at the school, you know, and he knows the roofs, so he'll give us a complete report, and then we'll go from there. If it's in excess of the limits, then you can, you know.
I definitely.
But I'll give you a full report once I receive it.
Another roof company.
Mike, one other thing I want to ask you. One month, didn't you say you did an inspection of it? Did you go on?
No. He was supposed to call me, and he didn't call me to join him, so I didn't know, because I was surprised he was there yesterday, because he told me again, you know, you wanna come up with me. I says, well, you let me know.
Did you say you expect the roof?
Tunnelby Construction.
Oh, you did. Oh, they did.
Me and Mr. Bayne inspected Central Friday, I think we were repairing the, what, the skylights, that we were repairing to fix it, and we found the next one. So we need to, if they're gonna inspect it, then they need to inspect it, not just keep coming every month for another $1,200 bucks here, you know, it's a nice retainer.
I have the other bid, the other invoices that you questioned, the advertising invoices, and the Herald Standard, we had four advertisements that went out. There was the bid for the ceiling and patching in the parking lots for the high school and stadium. There was a special meeting notice. There was the high school principal advertisement, and the high school marching band advertisement. The costs were $173 for the bid advertising, $37 for the meeting advertising, $440 for the principal advertising, and $244 for the band advertising. That was with the Herald Standard. And the TRIB had two, and they're more expensive, the TRIB is more expensive. There were two ads for that, $1,196, and that was the band director for $419, and the high school principal for $770.
Say those two numbers again. For the principal, for the band director, was how much? Because the report has band director was $1,100, now what was the band director?
The band director's $419.12, and the principal's $777.80. The band director ran four, five times, and the size was a 14. The principal's notice was twice, a little more than twice as big. It was a size 35, it ran five times also. Plus the size of it, it was a more expensive ad.
And we made that decision on the size of it?
Well, that's, that's the requirement, you know, you're asking for requirements in that ad. I mean, there's, you know.
Paper makes that determination.
I mean, the one in the Herald Stanford principal job, it was a very nice ad. I thought it was, I don't know why we needed that to be that expensive and that big. I mean, if you're looking for a principal job, you go through the ad, and you see principal under Ps, and you look and find a job. You know, to have that big blown-up thing just seemed like a complete waste of money to me. And to be honest with you, the TRIB, I don't know why we're doing business with the TRIB at those ridiculous prices. I understand by law, we're required to report in the paper, you stated that is the Herald Standard, then we should just stay with the Herald Standard and get away from the TRIB, it's a waste of money.
The board, this was a long while back, recommended that we put it in at least two papers to see what type of results we would get.
And they wanted to canvass the whole, you know, not only Fay County, but they wanted to canvass Washington, Green Hill.
Well, what if you put the PSD able for free?
Yeah, and it's online.
Hey, that's where they're going these days. They're looking online.
So we can always go back to the one paper and then online, but that's what the board is saying.
That's.
Because you're.
Mike, we're gonna ask to approve the cafeteria fund, and I told you Monday night that I'd be prepared on the cafeteria fund. And as I started going through my thing, I'm very disturbed about a few things. The first thing I'm disturbed about, that is not acceptable to me, is you're wanting to pay the June bills, and I don't have no bills here for this in my agenda.
With June's bills, the general fund?
Yeah.
Sure, and they were. The June bills were approved at the, wait, did we meet? The July bills. The June bills, the July bills were approved in June, so the board authorized payment of the bills because we did not meet in July. So there is a bill list.
I'm supposed to have an eye to my stage, because you have me on. I'm gonna sit here and.
Excuse me, I'm explaining it to you. If you look on page. On page 41, those are the July general fund payments that we're listing that were paid from the June meeting through the bill list we completed with this board. Okay, so through page 44, or July's bills that were paid, we're asking for approval on. Then on page 45, we're starting with the, all right, 45 is July's, sorry, 45 and 46. So pages 41 through 46 are July's bills. Cafeteria, general fund, federal funds. Then on page 47 are the bills that we have received from that cutoff point where we paid those bills. Through page 53 are the bills that are now being put before you to approve, and these will be written and paid after this meeting.
But what I don't understand is, when we met June, we didn't have bills for the month of June. Okay, they're all in the month before. These bills all have July dates.
We had bills in June. You get a bill list every month.
Well, here, here, what does, what does that write? The track report, since it has my name on it, I'll just go right to it. Okay? We transferred, we transferred $32,742.46 out of cafeteria fund to the general fund. Am I correct?
What are you looking at right now?
I'm looking at the general fund check. Page 13.
Okay. That $32,000?
Yeah.
Okay, what happens there is, when the state pays us our subsidies, you only have one account that they'll put it in. And they put the cafeteria money into the general fund, and then we transfer it to the cafeteria fund, because it's cafeteria fund money. So what you're seeing there is a cash receipt coming into the general fund, being transferred out to the general fund, because, I mean, it's a general fund out to the cafeteria fund, because that's their money. We can't have a deposit directly into the cafeteria fund, because the state will only recognize one account.
Does that not say transferred from cafeteria fund? It doesn't say to cafeteria.
Oh, okay, then what that would be is payroll.
All right, so the payroll.
That would become payroll.
All right, so you're telling me the payroll for June was $32,000. I had not one lunch served and not one employee.
The cafeteria gets paid throughout the whole year. They pay it over twelve months.
Related.
They're paid over twelve months.
Related.
Are you listening to me? They're paid over twelve months. They don't get paid over the school year, they get paid over twelve months. They work 180 days. The way it's done is you take 180 days, days they work, times their hourly rate, and divide it by 26 pages. They don't get paid over school year, they get paid throughout the summer.
My wife never got sick this summer.
Probably because she.
That's an option, I think.
That's not, that's not mandatory for all.
No, it's an option.
And the ladies that we have.
But they also have health insurance.
I tell you, I do my research, we had three ladies collecting that decade, and you can't tell me one month is $32,000, and the next month, another week, it's $68,000.
But payroll also includes their health insurance.
Well, then I got a bill that shows you where you took that out of the cafeteria fund, and here too. And then when I went through these bills, and I'm sitting there going through this stuff, okay, in the month of July, I got $68,835.64 in the cafeteria fund. $45,948 was blue dough in the general fund, which leaves me a balance of $22,887. A bill that I could find in these receipts. When I add all the cafeteria bills up, I come up to $19,304.59, which leaves me a difference of $3,582.56 that I can't account for. And then I find a bill in there that says life skills, $178 for food for July, and I can't figure out what food we bought for life skills in July.
The life skills, there is one student that is on a restricted diet, and we have to buy baby food. And they also, don't they have? Isn't there something to do with snacks or something to do with life skills?
It was for the one particular student.
That's that one student?
Yes.
Did I ask you to order that?
That's, the cafeteria director goes out and purchases that.
So that food is already in place for my life skills worker. I'm very disturbed. I break this down, I see money moving, I got $45,000 moving in July over the general fund. I got $32,000 moving over in June. I got, I mean, these are red flags that disturb me, because the reason why they disturb me and brought my attention is because it just happened to be the cafeteria, is how I look up, like, for all the money being lost last night. And you went into a union meeting and told the ladies that this cafeteria lost money. They knew that we lost money before any board member that sets up here ever heard a word about it. And I can't find anywhere in any of these reports where I lost money.
For some reason, you do not get a report. I wanna give you a report for every fund, and I will start giving you a report for every fund, just like I do for the general fund. But you don't get a report for the cafeteria fund, you don't get a report, and therefore you expend your report for it, so you can see it happening, but you will be getting that beginning the next meeting, because you don't get enough reports here.
That's not acceptable.
I changed some reporting that I got here, but there was a balk on that one, and now you will get those reports, because I feel you need that information. But there was a, there was a loss, as I said Monday night, it was a, this is pre-audit, a loss of $109,902.6 for the year.
Well, Mike, I asked you this, if I lost $109,000. I asked you to go to your office right now and go get every bill for the cafeteria fund, I'm screwed.
Yeah, you can come in anytime you want.
I'm not coming in, I want it delivered to me.
I told you that before.
I'm not sitting in this school for 65 hours, I'll sit on my couch and go through them. I want it delivered to me. Every bill for the cafeteria for the 2012, 2013, yeah, 2012, 2013, this whole year.
My question is, when did you find out we weren't just, we didn't just lose $109,000?
Well, I, you know.
Were you trying to?
I did not find out, honestly, I did not find out until all the payroll was posted at, was at the. It was the August 7th pay, when the last pay was posted, that's when I was able to see the full picture of cafeteria for last year to prepare for the audit, and that's when I noticed that there was, there was issues that I hadn't addressed, and we looked at it. I did not know that, you know, over the year, there were 37,000 less meals served. That averages about 200 meals a day, and half of that.
200 less meals a day?
200, yeah, but half of that, 100 meals a day was, was, was a drop in enrollment.
Hold it. Hold on, we're adding extra kindergarten classes to the other sizes.
That's this coming year.
No, we had, we had added, well, no, last year, we didn't reduce any other classes last year.
Don't you get out of here, because it's too much chicken.
Well, we had a change in the menu too, because of the federal guidelines, you know, whole wheat breads, whole wheat.
I understand that my problem is this, that we have to track everything in this district, all money, every month, all the time. You can't wait till August now and tell us, we lost $100,000.
Well, I never got, I never received any word from the food service manager that said, Mike, you need to look at this. I mean, from my bookkeeper, I was hearing, you know, you know, we have to wait for the subsidy to get here paid for payroll, which is the same news I heard last year. But what I didn't know was, the subsidy coming in was not as much as last year, because there weren't as many meals served.
So you're saying $109,000 was between meals?
Yes, there was a drop in meals.
That's where the loss was.
It's in the revenue side. The expenditure side did not move as much from last year to this year.
Okay.
But the revenues dropped.
We lost in revenues.
It was all in the federal revenues, all in the green renewed plan program.
But I have money in the cafeteria fund, am I correct?
You have money.
We have money. Sorry, the board, board administration, you keep saying you, the board, we're always right.
You have cash, you have cash in the checking account, because the general fund is floating the cafeteria. That's cash. That, they still have cash, because I didn't drain it, okay? I didn't take every last cent to pay the bill, because then you would have nothing. So we're, the general fund is supporting the cafeteria this year, the last year.
You gave me a number that I sold 37,000 less lunches, but what you didn't give me is how many more snacks I sold. Nor do I ever see snacks, how much money we make on our snacks, never see it. That money just goes into the cafeteria fund, there's no report, but I can promise you, our cafeteria makes a report every day on how much they sold us snacks. But we aren't at liberty on this board to get any of that information.
You're in liberty, if you want that information, I'll provide it.
Well, the only question I'm saying, I wanna share with the board's money that moved from the cafeteria fund over the general fund in. In February, it was sixty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. In January, it was forty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-ten dollars. December was thirty-eight thousand. March was sixty-six, I mean, these numbers aren't even supposed to be the same. I mean, they're-
It all depends on payroll. You have payroll every month. All that represents is payroll. And a little bit of back and forth for PSSA meals and meeting meals and such like that. You know, the general fund owes the cafeteria for those things. But for the cafeteria, the general fund is the paymaster. Okay? The pay is produced, generated from the general fund. Cafeteria fund is billed for it and reimburses the general fund for payroll and fringe benefits. That's, that's pay that they earn on an hourly basis. The matching employer's retirement, the social security, workers' comp, and health insurance and other fringe benefits the employees in the cafeteria are entitled to.
But I don't care how you look at it.
But that's what those amounts are.
Twenty days a month in teaching? I mean, we're talking drastic numbers differences. The days of school differences ain't that much.
But it depends how many, twice a year, you have three pays in a month. So those are going to be heavier months than the other ones.
I, I'm recommending to this board that we don't pay any cafeteria funds. We vote not, not to pay any cafeteria, not to approve any cafeteria funds until we have a full explanation and a full investigation on how this cafeteria lost money.
Well, in, in a couple of days, I'm going to be notifying the auditors to come in and conduct their audit. The auditors are hired by the school board to conduct an audit. That's your eyes on our information. You know, we got the audit, we received an audit report last year, we'll receive another one this year. The numbers are the numbers, I mean, there's nothing to hide. I know that when I arrived here, I know that you don't get a lot of reports that I normally generate at other schools, but traditionally, this is, this is all you wanted to see. We're basically the required documents of a board, which was the cash reconciliations, the cash balances.
It's not all-
We give a bill list, and I also introduced the revenue expenditure report, which you weren't getting prior to when that audit with the general fund was over. I'll do that for all funds.
Now, the flag, it's not what I, what I, a year ago, I said that I need the details on the financial.
We can move forward. I suggest that Mr. Bane and Mr. Guglioli, you guys get together on the reports here. I can hear both sides of you. The audit reports, both, all the audit reports were good last year. I know you're talking about this year, so that's something you guys can get together on. Do you want to continue with item six?
I need somebody to make a motion to approve the July, June, three thousand thirteen general fund, cafeteria fund, Title I funds, Title II A, QD, treasure and finance.
Motion by Director Teravakia.
Second.
Second by Director Harvey. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
No.
Mr. Bane?
No.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
No.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teravakia?
Yes.
Item seven, Mr. Bane, is it D and F?
Correct.
Okay. Prove the following funds minus D and F. Is that correct, Mr. Bane?
That's correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Question?
Yes.
Do we have the motion to amend the agenda?
I think his motive, you don't mean the motion to amend the agenda. He's only asking for approval of votes. Anyone can make a motion to ask approval of votes. He's asking for approval. I understand his motion of all but D and F. That's correct. I mean, someone should make a motion to approve D and F. But if you could take, if I could take it individually or you could take it collectively?
Isn't D part of salary?
That is benefits. I, I'm a F instead. That, that's built for benefits. That's why I don't understand that built around the cafeteria fund.
We gotta pay that, Jeff.
That's what I said. I can, I, F can stay on.
Is F or D paying salary? Which one?
F is for benefit.
The thirteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-one and forty-seven cents is on page forty-two. It's payments in general fund, forty-seven dollars for life insurance, thirteen thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars for health, vision and dental. That's for the July, health, vision and dental. You have an eighty-nine dollar, ten cent invoice for Hooters poultry, for food, for summer feeding program. That would be for the summer camp that's going on right now, which we're running as a summer feeding program. I can give you a description on the John Bennett Creative Services. Would that be, yeah, that's, that's our menu, that's a menu program for Ms. Kehler to produce menus. Okay? And then there was some travel and coffee, coffee supplies that were, Mrs. Kehler purchased and reimbursed her. And then thirty dollars for Kurt's Brothers for general office supplies and expenses, some supplies came in.
So what we'll do is, we'll vote for a motion to approve A through A. We want to eliminate it.
The twelve-hundred-and-seventy-six was payments-
Already have a motion and a second by Director Broadwater. Motion and a second.
Is there a second? Mr. Broadwater, you-
Director Broadwater, second.
I need a second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Teravakia made the motion, it's a Broadwater second.
Okay.
And the motion and a second, roll call.
Okay, Mrs. Teravakia?
Yes.
And Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
And Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Item A, it's listed report, Mr. Davis?
Please say why it's on the report.
Thank you. Education, Director Dorsey?
Okay, item A, I move to renew the alternative education contract, Act forty-eight program agreement for services with Adelphi Education Incorporated for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Teravakia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yeah.
And Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teravakia?
Yes.
Item B, I move to approve the attached University of Pittsburgh services agreement between Brownsville Area School District and Tri-State Study Council for staff development for two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year at a cost of thirty-two thousand to be paid by Title I funds.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Teravakia. Questions?
Question. Is this the program where the teachers get a mentor?
Yes, special coaching, yes.
Okay. We talked about this, I believe it was in April as well. The, so in April, we approved this for the remainder of last year's, last school year?
Correct.
Yeah, so this motion takes us with this program till?
Yeah, the whole year.
Oh, yeah, okay. And do we get any input from the principals and from the teachers on if they like this program or not?
Yes.
And they all like it?
Yes.
Or majority of them like it?
Yes. We've briefed back to both principals and teachers. We have teachers seeking out our coaches in the hallway, asking them to come in.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This program was in place before it was on the PSSAs.
Correct.
We signed a agreement with him last year, then it came back and they won't ask for more money because they need to do more work. Okay? I don't have the results back yet for my PSSA. I'm kind of questioning what the results are in there, what?
Well, we can, we can schedule a education meeting to discuss that. There was a delay and we didn't have it now.
Key student, yeah. I strongly recommend-
I know, but I'd like to see some of the results. Again, we're spending so many tax dollars in this. I mean, I know about the money, but-
Right, no, you're right. You're right.
Not a single one of us on this board, though, any of the results of what we've obtained.
We do have, there was a delay. Putting it all together, what we can do is schedule an education meeting, we can actually break it down nicely. But I strongly recommend it. We've seen improvement. Principals like it, teachers like it. So it's a win-win and we can also show you the results.
Now, they're not going to come back?
No, no. What happened last year was we only did it for excellent. After reviewing what the information we had cut back, it was a good idea to continue for next year to start on this year as well. So we cut it in half.
I got it. So we didn't, last year, we didn't pay for a part of it.
Exactly. Exactly. But this year, we just wanted to do it. One-stop shop, get it done. But we do have the data. Just give us some time so we can get it all together and we can break it down.
Just one last final comment. I'm going to vote no. And I've heard, I understand that you guys are telling me most of the teachers like it. I've talked to a sample, not a wide, my sample size is small, so, you know, obviously, the ones I've talked to do not like it. So, but again, my sample size was very small. If your size is better, that's fine, the motion will probably pass, but I'm voting no.
I choose to vote no only because I would like to talk to the doctors.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I have a second on that. I've got a motion by Dorsey. Who's second then? Mrs. Teravakia? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Assett? Mr. Bane? Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
No.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
No.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teravakia?
Yes.
Fine, motion passed.
Item C, I move to renew the special education placement agreement with NHS Pennsylvania.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Teravakia. Questions? All in favor? I oppose. At this time, I would entertain a motion to effective session for personnel. Motion by Teravakia?
Second.
Second by Director Harvey. All in favor? I oppose. And at seven forty-one for personnel.
Consider a motion to recall Ms. Melissa Dillon, Mr. Kurt Mahan and Mrs. Joanne Thomas from furlough status effective two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year.
Motion by Director Del Ros, second by Director Teravakia. Question?
Mr. Mahan, was he on the sub-?
He was on the, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
Item B, I move in accordance with section eleven oh eight of the school laws of Pennsylvania to consider a motion to acknowledge the following professional employees who have completed three years of successful teaching experience and as a result of attending that status, obtain tenure rights. Mrs. Leana Wright, Mr. Philip Matzick, Mrs. Rebecca Harvey, Ms. Danielle Schweitzer, Ms. Sarah Inks, Mrs. Tricia Kiffin, Mr. Robert Hall and Mrs. Jessica Van Meter.
Motion by Director Del Ros, second by Director Teravakia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bane? Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
And Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Abstained.
And Mrs. Teravakia?
Yes.
Item C, I move to hire Melissa De Simon as a temporary professional teacher, master's degree, step one of the BEA district contract effective August twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, middle school, high school, special English, special education English teacher.
Motion by Director Del Ros.
Second.
Second by Director Dorsey. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Teravakia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
And Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Item D, I move to hire Ms. Cynthia Walters as a full-time special education aide salary consistent with the district SEIU contract effective August twenty-second, or twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen.
Motion by Director Del Ros, second by Director Teravakia. Questions? Roll call, please.
And Mr. Assett?
Yes.
And Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teravakia?
Item E, I move to hire Mr. Philip Genuce as security guard with salary and benefits as negotiated in the district SEIU contract effective August twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen.
Motion by Director Del Ros, second by Director Bane. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Teravakia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yeah.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey, did I get you?
Item M, I move to hire David Williams as security guard with salary and benefits as negotiated in the district SEIU contract effective August twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen.
Motion by Director Del Ros, second by Director Teravakia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yeah.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item G, Linda, do you really have to? I move to acknowledge, accept the letter of resignation to retirement of Mrs. Linda Workman, superintendent secretary, board clerk, effective October thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. Motion by Director Del Rose, second by Director Bain, Terebekia.
Thank you very much for the year, it's been outstanding, good toward for the community, very, very polite, generous, very helpful. Thank you.
Linda and I went to school together, see where we're at.
It's twenty-seven years, Flue.
I have a motion and a second. We'll take a roll call on this.
Not for real, really.
Yeah, we're going to roll call.
Mrs. Terebekia?
No.
Mr. Harvey?
Regrettably, yes.
Uh, Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
I guess I have to.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
We've been together for a long time.
Yes, you've been there, right, with, a lot of years, right?
Yes. I mean, I hope you're going to retire and you'll truly wish.
Thank you. Mr. Bashir?
Do you have five bucks?
Yeah.
No.
Mr. Bain?
Well, I would never vote against your wish.
I thank you. And Mr. Assett?
Yes, I hope you enjoy retirement, thank you.
Let me do my part, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
We wish you the best.
Item H, I move to approve the attached request from Mrs. Elia Schoenstein, kindergarten teacher, for an extended maternity leave of absence through January thirteenth, two thousand fourteen. Motion by Director Del Rose, second by Director Terebekia, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item I, I move to enter into agreement with Eddie Link Incorporated to purchase the PAETEP electronic portal to be used by the Brownsville area school district to manage the teacher evaluation process for his teachers and supervisors at a cost of three thousand and twenty-one dollars to be paid by Title I funds. Motion by Director Del Rose, second by Director Terebekia, questions?
Yeah, just one, one quick question. This is for the whole, I guess it's an online type of program that you guys can use to do all that? Is this like the access to the program for a certain period of time or?
For the whole year.
For the whole year. So if we don't like this program and some other developer develops, we can, we can switch out to it?
Okay. My question, and I have a fair, good, fair, good call, all of that, we, we, the licensing right, that's a try day, everyone, all the whole there.
The observations, the observations, the tri-state cannot be used in professional education. Teacher improvement, this is for evaluation.
Motion, a second? Roll call please.
Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
And Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Item B, I move to add Sherri Smith, Amy Ball, and Andrew Giles to the professional substitute list. Motion by Director Del Rose, second by Director Terebekia, questions? All in favor?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Director Bain?
Item A, consider, I'm making a motion to acknowledge the notification for restory tax sales for Washington Tax Pay Bureau for parcel ID six seven zero 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 three zero zero one zero zero one two zero zero bidder, Gaby Sanders, and authorize the president of the board to sign the consent for the sale on behalf of the district.
Motion by Director Bain, second by Director Terebekia, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Consider a motion to acknowledge the notification for restory tax sales by accounting Tax Pay Bureau and authorize the president of the board to sign the consent of the sale on behalf of the district. Parcel ID oh two, I'm sorry, oh two oh seven, oh one, Sean O'Brien, parcel ID number nineteen thirty-two oh oh twenty-two, Stephen Ingdom, and parcel ID thirty eleven zero zero one nine, Donald Thomas.
Motion by Director Bain, second by Director Terebekia, questions?
Yeah, those are current owners, might, of those parcels?
They're.
Or the buyers.
They're the buyers.
Perfectly the buyers. All the buyer.
Yeah, these are the buyers.
Okay. I, the point that we brought up last time is that we would like to know if any of these parcels, because we don't have time to go and go get these, if any of these are vacant properties, there are some other stuff out there that we would know when that occurs, so.
No, the, the licks, you'll know.
I, I don't know by the numbers.
These, and these are, uh, part of parcels.
Yes.
But they're back on the attached list.
Right, it's all good. Even, and I wouldn't say we vote against the vacant property, that's just something we would want to know if any of those are, so.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Did you hear right?
Mr. Victor Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Consider a motion, I make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the tax disabled veterans' real estate tax exempt certificate.
Motion by Director Bain, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call please.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
And Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
And Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Consider a motion to award the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen athletic bid for two separate sports. This is for all sports, it's a low bidder at nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Motion by Director Bain, second by Director Terebekia, questions?
Is it correct this?
It's not for footballs.
It's all sports.
For what?
Can you repeat everything?
General, general.
Is this in line with past years?
Less.
Less?
Yes.
Motion and a second, roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Consider a motion to approve the three-year extension of the agreement of near-power solutions provided Energy Management Services contracting through the IE one electricity assortment.
Motion by Director Bain, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call please.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Bashir?
Yes.
And Mr. Bain?
Yes.
And Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Consider a motion to approve the following breakfast lunch prices for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Elementary one thirty, elementary breakfast one thirty-five, secondary breakfast one thirty-five, adult breakfast one ninety-five, elementary lunch one eighty-five, secondary lunch two dollars, adult lunch three-ten, and extra meal sixty cents.
Motion by Director Bain, second by Director Terebekia, questions?
I, I want to vote yes to this and, and hope, hope that this resolves some things. And I, I commented the other night about the, the teachers incentive program to buy lunches. And if, if this approves, I would, I would also expect a free lunch program if they buy five, give one free, because I believe that will solve some things.
Motion and a second, roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Assett? Yes. Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Athletic Director Assett?
Before you go there, I have a quick question. We were talking about parcels of land up there. I just thought of something. Mike may be able to answer this. We had five properties in West Brownsville that, that local government pretty much allowed the railroad to walk right in and toss people out and take over their properties. And they're going to use some of that to put in some extra railroad tracks. Now, do we totally lose that off of the tax rolls or will the railroad be responsible to, to, to still pay taxes on that land? Because that was not originally part of a railroad, you heard, it was residential property.
That I can't answer. I know we receive a public utility ability payment from the state that I offer every year, and I have received, I think, you know, like electric gas, they, they pay something, you know, to this fund, obviously, if roads are.
I would see, because I mean, it was, it was five nice residential properties that are now, it's a mess, it's a total mess down there related to that also. I don't know if the bus companies checked on it, but the one road down at the main street at the crossing down by the West Brownsville Legion, that's totally closed right now. They're supposed to reroute the crossing up farther, but that road's closed, and I don't know if the bus company has a plan B because they can no longer get across the tracks, if they're going to have to relocate bus stops or what. But they cannot get across down at that lower end. Yeah, I'd check, check with the bus company and see what they want to do, because I know there's kids now that need, you know, on both sides of the tracks down there, but, and really, it's unsafe for them to walk across the tracks too at that point with all that construction.
Okay, I have a motion, I'm sorry. Director Assett?
Item A, I move to hire Harry Bruffhorn as middle school soccer coach, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Conversation settled step one. I don't know what step it is, sorry, do the step seventeen hundred dollars in the athletic salaries scale.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call please.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Item B, I move to hire Mr. Joseph Donkers as assistant middle school soccer coach for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Conversation settled step one, the athletic salaries scale.
Motion. Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item C, I move to hire Mr. Christopher Manis, golf coach, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Conversation settled step ten, the athletic salaries scale.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call please.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes. Item D, I move to hire Ms. Perry Struski as head volleyball coach, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year, with conversation settled, conversation settled at twenty-nine hundred on the athletic salaries scale.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item E, I move to hire Ms. Beth Midner as assistant cross-country coach for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Conversation settled step one, the athletic salaries scale.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes. Item F, I move to hire Mr. Brian Emerson as head cross-country coach for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year, with conversation settled step ten, the athletic salaries scale.
Uh, motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item G, I move to hire Ms. James People as assistant cross-country coach for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Conversation settled step five, the athletic salaries scale.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Like the table, item H, this time, second.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, table item H, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
Item I, I move to hire Mr. Dan Longgrove as head girls tennis coach, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year, with conversation settled fifty-one hundred dollars.
I have a motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Building the ground, Director Harvey?
Yeah, I move to salvage the following vehicles and equipment for pickup truck, Dodge pickup truck, and tractor.
I have a motion by Director Harvey, second by Director Terebekia, questions?
Question. Is that, please, is that school police car on the front, when we add to this list soon, or we just going to leave it set up for us? What's your point?
Still runs. We, we do use it, yeah, runs, we still use it to, for various reasons.
Oh, okay, it doesn't work then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Uh, policy, Director Terebekia?
Consider a motion to approve the provisions of following policies. Pupils number two oh four attendance, pupils number two fifteen promotion and retention, pupils number two twenty-seven controlled substances and paraphernalia, Brownsville area high school homecoming court policies.
Motion by Director Terebekia?
Second.
Second by Director Assett, questions?
We're, we're still clear to add more policies, right? I mean, it's not a one-stop, tonight's the only night, because.
You mean, you mean it in the future?
Right. We can do a policy, I mentioned, we do these in August.
No, you're not limited to, to a month unless you got a policy limiting, I said we don't.
But normally, you want to do it right before school time.
Right. Yeah, just, this, we were going to bring up, we, we definitely, and I'll have that for next month, they, you could do that. A full written policy, what was that, three oh five, I think? I'll, we'll write that to, to get you guys out to take a look at, you could do that.
The question I had wanted to talk to you in the beginning is, the other night I asked what was my report in there, so I'm in the hospital, that, that might just react to that.
That, that's all, that's all understood, and, and there's a difference between when you have a student that is, that is ill, it's in there, that says, excuse, excuse him or illegal or.
Rick, you did put that in that revision.
It defines, there's a definition of.
Yeah, I, I apologize for this, but I'd just need to change, like a rundown, little bit of, the.
Bits and pieces of.
Yeah, under attendance, we made some corrections with the elementary. Prior to, they were able to have twenty-four excuses for the school year before it became illegal for parent excuses, we dropped that down to twenty. Um, also with the attendance, we corrected, did we, what was it, the credit replication? Because originally, the policy had it set for block scheduling, we haven't had block scheduling here over eight years, so we made it more to us as well, then removed the tardies, we eliminated the makeup time, because what was happening, makeup time, you were penalized twice, so you were cited for being tardy, but also due makeup time, so it was double, double jeopardy there. With the promotion retention, we spelled out for the procedure, what grants you promotion to each grade level. Uh, the class on a A, if you failed reading, you, in grades one and two, you were retained, and you had the option of being retained once. In grades three through five, you had to fail reading and a fourth, another four subjects to be able to be retained. Six through eight, you had to fail, you lose these two four subjects. And then also at the secondary level in high school, you had to fill in credits in order to move on from one grade level to the next. And we reflected that based on the fact that we've added more credits into the school day, the students are now getting eight credits as opposed to seven, so we've correctly got correction in there as well. Under control substances and paraphernalia, we've added that before they require any student who was caught with prescription drugs, any drugs on school campus were in their system, that they will have to go through drug and alcohol counseling in order to be reinstated. And then the Brownsville homecoming court policies, originally they had stated that if a student is suspended at any point in their four years of high school, they cannot run for homecoming. So we made a reflect of that school year for eligibility. So say, for example, you're a tenth grade student, and you were suspended ninth grade, it can't be counted against you, you can still run for homecoming.
What if, you know, you've been having a ninth grade, and tenth grade, and eleventh grade?
It only goes for that year, for that year eligibility.
If you're good in twelve, you can, you can go to court in twelve.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item nine, public comments on non-attend items. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name, and your last chance to the next one.
Sir, motion to adjourn?
Director Terebekia, second by Director Bain, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Okay.[1788.53]